Evening, everybody. We're gonna kick off the meeting here in just a little bit, but I need to inform you that tonight, being our first meeting of the new year, I want to first say Happy New Year to everybody. I do want to mention that tonight is open-mic night, and since it is, if you want to speak on any of the items other than public hearing items, I am asking that you please fill out an open-mic speaker card. You can find them out on the table. Open mic takes place at the very top of the meeting following the consent agenda. So at this time, if you do want to speak to the council regarding any issues, this is your opportunity to do so. Please fill out one of the speaker cards. You'll have three minutes within which to speak to council, and council will not be able to interject any comments whatsoever. Appreciate you being here. We'll kick off the meeting here in just a second. We're here at City Hall at 6:00 PM, a little bit thereafter. As I said, Happy New Year, everybody. Council members, please note that all ordinances that were contained in your packet, they reflect a date of 2011. I will assure you that prior to any signatures being placed upon them, the dates will be corrected. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Larry Dixon of Faith Assembly of God to lead us in our invocation. If you would, please stand with us.
Shall we pray? Father God, we're so grateful that we can always come to you and that you are Lord over our lives, no matter what our situation may be. We're grateful that you have told us in your word that we could pray for those who have leadership over us, that we might lead peaceable lives. And it's with that in mind this evening that we come before you in the first meeting of this new council year. We pray that you would give wisdom to those who lead our city, and Father, that you would bless them and that you would help them in making the deliberations that must be made. And Father, we know that you are concerned about all the things that impact our lives, and so we commit this time into your hands, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
And join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. For the record, I need to make mention that Mitch Tyra is not present at council, so if you would, please make that notation. As I said, this is open-mic night. We have three people who want to speak this afternoon, and I'll invite you up one at a time. First up, Mr. Tom Baker. If you would, please state your name and your address, and once we hear that, we'll start the clock.
Hi, my name is Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. I'd like to speak tonight about Agenda Item Number 11, which is the possible dissolution of the Tourism Advisory Board. The board's really only been in existence for a year now. It's very new. There's been problems with the board. The directions have been unclear at times. There's been some lack of participation in some of its members, but that's really no reason to get rid of it at this point. We just hired Shanna Smith Snyder, is that right? To be the Communications Director, and she's had a lot of experience with tourism boards and that type of thing. She really needs all the help that she can get right now, being a very new employee to the city. I think that, you know, we weren't without a Tourism Advisory Board for a number of years. We didn't have a marketing program for a couple of years. There's been a lot of things that got sort of left behind to the side. We've got some restart things. There's a... The day is changing now. There's...we can see the light in the tunnel now. It's gotten to be much better sales tax-wise, hotel occupancy tax-wise, more people in town. I think, you know, if we get rid of the Tourism Advisory Board now, again, it would not be to anybody's benefit. It doesn't cost us any money. They are totally advisory. They give you their input, a lot of years' experience on that board, coming from a lot of different directions, but, you know, they still need another couple more years of putting behind them to really get it going and make it very viable board. So please consider keeping them at best. Let's tweak it a little bit and make the board even better than it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I'll call on Scott Young. As mentioned before, state your name, your address, and we'll start the clock.
My name is Scott Young, 8612 Massey Road. I am president of the Historic Granberry Merchants Association. Mister Mayor, City Manager, and Council. Early in 2011, many of us were encouraged when this council established the Tourism Advisory Board. Through this year, I've witnessed numerous discussions and then positive action items from this board presented to you, the council, for approval. The current political jargon in our nation includes phrases like transparency, citizen involvement, and responsibility. The Tourism Advisory Board offers a facility that had been closed previously to citizens and stakeholders in the Granberry tourism industry. The message I get and I hear in this proposal to abolish the TAB is there is no need for citizen involvement. Those whose livelihood depends on tourism cannot have input on issues that might affect their income. The square will soon have six vacancies, and driving down 377 this morning, I saw a sign for sale on our iconic German restaurant that has been here as long as I remember. It is now closed. Let's work together. Let's exchange ideas. Let's encourage our stakeholders to help. I ask each of the council to consider the importance of this vote and the message it sends to voters. I ask you to not abolish the Tourism Advisory Board. Thank you.
And our last request for speaking is Mr. Jim Leach. Once again, state your name, your address. We'll start the clock.
Okay. My name is Jim Leach. I reside at 205 West Doyle Street, and I'm the chairperson of the Tourism Advisory Board. And I think I might try to take a little different tact here. I know that there's some on the council who believe that if we remove a level of bureaucracy and give everybody the same access to a voice, that that will solve the problem and we could abolish the Tourism Advisory Board. I would say that, and I would agree with the two speakers before me, that we have had some positive impact on making recommendations to this council. We were appointed by y'all, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate the service that we've had so far in being a part of this. I think that Shanna is gonna do a wonderful job for our city. I'm very highly complimentary of the job that she's doing so far. However, I do believe that there needs to be a collective voice in our community to allow for a council or a board, or whatever you want to call it, a way to collectively bring their voices together and share them with the city. So if you decide to abolish the Tourism Advisory Board, I ask you to please consider putting something else in place that would allow for a broader set and more diverse group of viewpoints of stakeholders in this community. We covered in our tourism board the hotels, the B&Bs, the restaurants, and so on. I'd like to see that continue in whatever form it may take, but I think we also ought to broaden it to bring on a true representative from the chamber, a true representative from HGMA's board, and allow those people to also have a voice to the city. So my thought would be, and this is just something to think about, is that if you decide to take away what we have today in your vote tonight, that you consider maybe allowing for a staff-appointed council that would allow for that community group, whatever you call it, an advisory council, and we've had those before, to be able to provide that input and feedback as a collective voice and not just individuals, because I'm sure that Shanna doesn't want a lot of people walking in on her all day long, giving their opinions of what should happen, although that may still happen. You know, there may...I think the collective voice would really be an asset to what she can do to help us grow tourism, and I think she'll do a wonderful job in whatever ends up happening, but I think that this is a really important step forward for us. We've made some really positive strides in the last 10 months to take us from where we were, which was basically not really a true coherent marketing plan and program. We moved it forward. We built the bridge that took us from where we were to where we are now. Shanna's gonna take that ball and do a great job running, but we need...she needs our support and the community behind it to support her, because there's a lot of experience, as was said before, and what we can bring to the table. So I please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. There being no further requests to speak on the open-mic section, we will move on to the consent agenda. Council, you received in your packet for approval, the council minutes of December 6, 2011. As usual, I have perused the document, and I found a few areas that I would like to point out. First off, under 11-205, we have some duplicate language. If you look at the last bullet point, it says, "At their November 21, 2011 meeting." That is actually...the last bullet should be stricken. I'm asking that that be taken into consideration. Also, under 11-206, the spelling of "recuse" is misspelt, so we'll correct the spelling of that. 11-211, there is mention under council approval, the rezoning of the property from C to I. There is no classification of C. It needs to be changed to read LC. Also, for clarification purposes, under the motion that follows council item 11-211, clarification, add the words industrial to light commercial to that section of the motion. Other than that, I found nothing else. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended, unless you have some to go along with them. We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett. Need a second?
I'll take it.
We have a second by Mr. Perkel. Any other amendments or adjustments to the minutes? Calling for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the deliberation item, I want to point your attention towards item number three, please, at this time, council. We received a continuance request for consideration on this particular item. It is placed before you at your dais. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the continuance request until the January 17 meeting to allow the applicant time to get FAA documentation and a copy of the lease agreement.
Don't move, Mayor.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second, please?
Take it.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion granted. We'll pick up at item number one now, and in this item, we're going to discuss and consider a contract with Brian Gaffin to perform design-build services for the remodeling, renovation, and/or the expansion of the Granberry Opera House. The Design and Build Committee comprised of Terry Cone, Andrew Barris, Keith Callahan, and Wayne McKethan reviewed the submissions for the Opera House RFQ, and the applicants were narrowed down to Brian Gaffin and also Scott Tucker and Associates based on the criteria included in the RFQ documentation. At this point, the interviews were scheduled with the two applicants, and the recommendation is that Brian Gaffin be selected as the choice for architect and construction services. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to allow the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate a contract with Brian Gaffin as the architect for the remodel of the Granberry Opera House project and to bring that contract back to council for final approval.
Don't move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion on this item?
This is only for the Opera House, not with that.
This is for the Opera House project?
When you say project, we're talking about the one building?
Well, it also includes that backstage portion of the construction to replace the Quonset hut, for clarification.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions regarding this?
Just because it has to do with Opera House project, I would like to ask the city manager how the utility situation is going in this town. I see some work being done there.
Yes, we're making...and might I say, the Quonset hut is down. That was the first requirement. The utility, we're working on the water and sewer right now. We will be working on the electric as well, to put it underground. We're proceeding on, hopefully by end of the month or first, second week in February.
And just to inform you, there is an AIA document form that will be used as the standard for this type of agreement, and it'll be brought back with a bunch of the blanks filled in for council's approval. All in favor of allowing the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate a contract and bring it back to council for final approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two. At this time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of the Lake Granberry Medical Center to renew a specific use permit to allow for the continued operation of a heliport on an existing pad site at 1310 Paluxi Highway, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said SUP. The existing facility use is located northeast of the hospital adjacent to the emergency room. The hospital is requesting to renew the existing SUP to allow for a heliport to support air ambulance services. The applicant will continue to bar and restrict any type of fueling or fuel storage on the site. Also, there have been no incidents made aware to...by way of asking the airport board, we have been made aware of no violations or complaints regarding the operation of the heliport and associated activities. Scott, can you give us any other additional information regarding this item, please, sir?
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, thank you. Along with the previous conditions imposed on the SUP, there was a requirement on the issuance for one year that they removed the curb and gutter section. They did that, and you can see the removal and the ramp basically there with the dolly that they can roll it off for emergency ingress by other helicopter units to visit the hospital. So the previous SUP had four conditions. That was taken off because it was actually constructed as per the condition imposed by council. As the mayor mentioned, the three other conditions, no refueling or fuel storage or maintenance of the helicopter on site. They shall maintain the appropriate lighting and markings in accordance with the FAA circular. And lastly, the previous SUP was issued for one year. P&amp;Z is reporting that they would like to see a three-year term limit on this SUP.
So what we have before us is a request for an SUP by the Lake Granberry Medical Center along with the stipulation that this shall be for a term of three years, as cited in the P&amp;Z report. Entertain a motion to accept.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Perkel, a second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this? I do want to clarify that this is approval of the SUP, including the conditions as outlined by the Planning and Zoning Commission report. All in favor, please say aye.
I do have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You have a question, sir?
Is the hospital...do they have any questions or anything about it, or they're happy with the way it's going?
I think if we approve it, they're happy.
Okay. I just didn't know if they had one to say anything about it.
They're here if they want to speak on it. Yeah, we'll take your comment from the podium, please, sir. State your name, your address, of course.
Derek Mike, 1727 Rockview, Assistant CEO of Lake Granberry Medical Center. We are good with P&amp;Z's recommendation for approval for three years, so if that works for city council.
Thank you. I need to step back a step, anyway. We've got a public hearing open. Are there anybody else out there in the public that wants to talk about this particular item? This is your chance to do so. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with a three-year term, along with the stipulations as requested in the Planning and Zoning Commission report.
I'd like to say yes.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have that followed up properly this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Mitch Hutchinson to rezone Lot 1, Block 1 of the Stoddard addition from light commercial to heavy commercial, to allow the operation of a veterinarian clinic without outside pins, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. The property is located at 4620 and 4626 East Highway 377. The applicant proposes to utilize some tenant space within the existing 5,000-square-foot building for a veterinarian clinic. The proposed clinic will not feature outside animal pins. Scott, can you please give us any more detail on this retrofit, please?
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, this is located just to the northeast of the intersection of FM 167 Falkland Highway North and US 377. It's surrounded by used car dealerships and minor auto repair facilities. It's a use that's compatible with the adjacent land use structure that's in place. The proposal's also consistent with our comprehensive plan. P&amp;Z and staff recommend approval as presented by the applicant.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the public that wants to speak, or the applicant that would like to speak regarding this particular rezoning issue? This time, we'll entertain a motion from the council to accept the rezoning request.
Mayor, move. We do so.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor of accepting the request to rezone the Lot 1, Block 1 of the Stoddard addition from light commercial to heavy commercial? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Moving on to item number five, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of All Creatures Animal Clinic to rezone 5700 East Highway 377, a 2.89 portion of Lot 2, Block 1 of the Schroeder addition from interim holding to heavy commercial, to allow for the expansion of the existing veterinarian clinic, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. The applicant proposes to expand the existing vet clinic located on the property. The scope of work includes enclosing a covered driveway to build a new covered play yard area, and retrofitting the existing metal exterior of the building with a combination of stucco and stone. There will be no outside pins proposed at this time. Scott, please give us some more detail regarding this item, please.
Mayor, the applicant's proposing to take a portion of property that's platted from interim holding to heavy commercial as presented. There will be no outside runs or pins, as mentioned. The architect, Mr. Brian Gaffin, did present us some good-looking elevations of what the building will present itself to along the streetscape. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval as presented.
At this time, I'll entertain anybody out there in the public that would like to speak on this matter, the applicant or the public. We'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Don't move.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Allen. To approve the rezoning at 5700 East Highway 377, being a 2.89 portion of Lot 2, Block 1 of the Schroeder addition from interim holding to heavy commercial. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Opening item number six, another public hearing regarding a request of Gabriel Juarez for a special use permit for 4502 East Highway 377 to allow for the operation of a minor automotive repair business in a light commercial zoning district, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said SUP. The applicant proposes to utilize an existing 2,000-square-foot building on the site for minor automotive repair business. The proposed business will specialize in tire replacement and repair. The property is currently zoned light commercial and requires a special use permit to allow the operation of a minor automotive repair. Scott, if you would, please go into some detail as to the additional issues that have to do with the retrofitting of the masonry, and I want to make sure that the applicant is aware of all this stuff, please.
Absolutely, Mayor, council. This site is aware, if you're familiar with Jackhammer Tattoos, it's the site where Jackhammer Tattoos is located. You can see the tattoo parlor to the rear portion of the property. The site being occupied, or proposed to be occupied for minor auto repair, is on the southwest corner of the site. You can see the larger building there. Here's the front elevation. What the proposal is, is to allow for minor auto repair. The SUP will only allow for internal minor auto repair, no outside activity or storage of auto parts or tires. Again, minor auto repair is inclusive only if tire changes, minor fluid changes and such. It doesn't allow for transmission pulls or engine pulls. Along with this particular proposal, prior to the issuance of a CO, the applicant will need to meet the 30% masonry requirement. Again, it's measured to the top plate of the building minus the doors and windows, so a lot of that area that you see by the roll-up doors and the windows will actually be discounted in the square footage requirement comparison. Also, approved hard surface and striping will be needed, so the building will be getting somewhat of a facelift prior to the CO being issued, if approved by council. P&amp;Z and staff recommend approval of the application as presented.
Mayor, I have some questions.
Let's see. First off, I'd like to see if the applicant is here. Would you mind coming up for us, please? And state your name for the record, please.
My name is Gabriel Juarez. We already did all the masonry, the stone, the parking lot, everything is ready. So, we just need your approval.
Great. That's what I was hoping I was going to hear from you, sir. Because I thought that, driving by there, I thought I saw some improvements already being done.
That's what I was just confirming, because I drove by the other day. Looks great. I mean, we got a picture of the before.
We got the old.
We didn't get the after picture, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much for clarification. Anybody else out in the public want to speak on this particular zoning, I mean, this S U P issue? We'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I have one question for Scott.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because I drove by and saw it, and so everything's done. You're satisfied?
Everything's done. What we need to do now is just have the building inspector go out there and verify the parking and striping and the stone, and he'll be issued the C O.
Don't move, Mayor.
So, we have a motion to accept the S U P by Mr. Tyro. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this S U P? Calling for the question. All in favor of approval of the S U P request by Gabriel Juarez? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Opening item number seven, a public hearing regarding a request of Granberry Medical Properties to final plat 620 Fall Creek Highway, being a 1.643 acre tract of the Benjamin Green Survey, abstract number 196, as Lot One, Block One of the Granberry Medical Plaza addition, and consider and approve said final plat. This is the final plat we heard from the applicant for a preliminary plat, I believe, at two meetings ago. Scott, can you give us more detail on this particular item?
That's correct, Mayor. We saw this as a two-lot preliminary plat, showing the 1.643 acres as the smaller lot, and the balance of that roughly eight acres or so as the back portion. The intent was to have the property owner actually just final plat this portion for any kind of future title transfer. One thing that was brought up at the last council meeting was there was an omitted note, our standard sewer extension note, that has since been added on the final plat. So, as the final plat's consistent with the preliminary plat, and that's been placed on the plat for filing, P N Z and city staff recommend approval as presented.
Are there any variances that go along with this? Because it's my understanding there was a list of variances.
They were all approved at the time the preliminary plat was presented, and that list is on the first page of the staff report.
Okay. Anybody in the public want to speak on this particular item, the applicant or anybody else? This is your chance to do so.
Mayor.
Hang on.
I'm sorry, sir.
We'll close the public hearing at this time. Yes, sir, Councilman.
What you were talking about there was like the 18-quarter line and the sidewalk was the variance they got.
Yeah, the variances that they received on the preliminary plat was to not install an 8-inch sewer main along Fall Creek Highway. We talked about the admitted note, and they did place at such time that it's available, though extended at their cost through the frontage along Fall Creek.
Don't move, Mayor.
I don't think I've made a motion, or requested one yet. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat for 620 Fall Creek Highway, being a 1.643 acre tract of the Benjamin Green Survey, abstract number 196, Lot One, Block One of the Granberry Medical Plaza addition.
Don't move.
Thank you. Mr. Allen? Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perkel. Any other discussion regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. This time, we're coming up to item number eight. This item actually contains two parts, and I'd like to have them considered separately, please. Council, consider and approve the First Net Cash Management User Agreement between First National Bank and the City of Granberry. The new user agreement implements higher security measures for commercial online banking at the First National Bank. The second item is consider and approve a commercial online banking resolution to authorize the city manager, Wayne McKeethan, to execute the First Net Cash Management User Agreement. As I said, I'd like to break this into two different parts. It seems that there's a higher level of security protocols being implemented at First National Bank through their First Net Management System, and one of their requests is to standardize a new user agreement between First National Bank and the city. And it contains a secondary part, which is the resolution.
And Mayor, the only question I had about that, because when I read through the packet, it talked about that we have a current contract in place from February 2011 until January 31st, 2014, and just the language would change. So, just, we're not entering to, and you agree, we have agreement consistent right now. Is that correct?
Right.
So, you just want to see the security procedures approved?
Right. But it's all part, they're rewriting the user agreement to include these additional items, such as changing the passwords to longer characters, using an iron key trusted access device to access the drive information, and implement callback procedures and dual control. Dual control refers to, one person can no longer access wire transfers and implement them.
Mayor, do you have a recommendation on the two motions?
Uh...
I see just approve the resolution is one of them.
First, we need to approve the user agreement, and then, once we approve the user agreement, then we'll go to the resolution.
Let me say one thing, too, and that is that in this new document, we're going to add Ava Gregory as the assistant finance director. So, she'll have more authority. Becky's gone. But, you know, with a cybercrime like it is, we support improving the controls. It's going to take more processing, but I think...
I got you. Okay, Mayor, I...
Well, hang on just a second, because Mr. McKeethan brings up a good point. We're attaching another signature of Ava Gregory to this. Shouldn't there be at least three authorized in case somebody is out of place? It's my understanding you are one authorized signature. Is that correct?
Yeah. There are other... Ava, what are all of the approvals?
I just want to make sure that we're not caught in some sort of a catch-22 by just adding Ava.
No, we actually do have other users who are able to access the online banking. So, we have Debbie Langston, myself. We're going to need to add Becky Malden. And we have also Carla and Teresa downstairs who can access part of the online banking as far as what they have to do with online drawings. They are the ones who initiate the A T H drawings from customers' accounts. All of these will require dual control. So, one of them will initiate the transfer, the A T H transfer, the other one will approve it. That's all it means. So, we have plenty of people...
That clarifies this much better for us. Thank you very much. Any other questions regarding this?
Each one of them has a different standard.
A different access, yes. A different password. Any other questions for Ava Gregory? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the First Net Cash Management User Agreement between First National Bank and the City of Granberry.
Don't move, Mayor.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyro. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any other questions regarding the user agreement? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now that we've done that, we need to create a resolution, because they are requesting that the city manager be authorized to execute the First Net Cash Management User Agreement. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the enclosed, I'm sorry, the enclosed resolution.
Mayor, I move that we approve a resolution to authorize the city manager, Wayne McKeethan, to execute the First Net Cash Management User Agreement.
Need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this resolution? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number nine, consider appointments and/or reappointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Upon vetting the council appointment of Mr. Tom DeCiccio, I guess is the last name, I'm sorry if I've butchered it, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it appears that the appointee does not meet the strict requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance to serve on that particular commission, having not residing for at least 12 months within the corporate city limits. And so, as a result, we need to find somebody else to appoint to the Z B A.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, yeah, to the Planning and Zoning. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, because I read through this, and then I got some phone calls, and I appreciate the phone calls. I had a question to the city manager, because the way this is worded, it's consider appointments and/or reappointments to Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Am I correct that through error of the council or staff, whatever happened, it's not important, but right now, as we sit here tonight, that we have David Southern on the Zoning Board of Adjustments and on the Cemetery Board? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, then, Mayor, I talked to David personally, because I want to make sure he understood what was going on here. It was a mistake to have that, and he understood, and he asked that he be able to stay on the Cemetery Board. So, I would like to appoint the gentleman who was not qualified on Planning and Zoning to be moved to the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and allow David to be moved off, because he is already serving after the vote tonight on the Cemetery Board. And that would take care of that. And then, alls we'd have to deal with is Planning and Zoning.
The only issue that I see on this is we received a request from him not to be considered for Z B A. In other words, his application didn't include Z B A. And so, does he want to serve on Z B A is the question that comes to mind. I don't know the man, so...
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We table both these items until February 7th, our first meeting in February. And that would give us another chance to get other people interested in doing it, make sure they want to be on the board. I had a couple people, actually just one, on the Planning and Zoning. They were out of town. They didn't get their name in. So, I don't know if they're still interested or not. They were. But, well, if we're going to do that, let's just table it until February, the first meeting.
I would support that, because the applications weren't in my package.
Yeah, I didn't get them. I didn't. The only thing I would ask the council to do, just because we're here, we have it as an item, and Mr. Southern called me, and I think it's very reasonable, that's fine. We don't make those Z B appointments, and we don't make the Planning and Zoning. But we remove him, he only serves on one committee tonight. So, I just move that we take him off the Zoning Board of Adjustments. That's my motion. And then, that'll leave us those two opportunities, like Mickey and Alan said, to fill them up at the next meeting.
First, I'd like to address, just for clarification, I want to clarify the fact that Tom DeCiccio does not qualify, and that he, as a result, he should be removed from the Planning and Zoning Board. Do I, can I get a motion for that, please?
Okay. And Mayor, that's a good point. Would you, would you...
That will create the vacancy that we're going to need.
Yeah, no. So, what I'm asking is, let's create a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning, and a vacancy on the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Because right now, there's two people, Mr. Southern and Mr. DeCiccio, the other individual that we have said shouldn't be there, for one reason or another.
Who determined that DeCiccio was not eligible? Was it our state secretary?
Staff did.
Is that where it's been determined?
Yes, it is. He does not qualify, and as such, I just need some clarification from council, that we all are understanding that there is still a vacancy on Planning and Zoning that needs to be filled.
And we need, if we do that other motion, then we'll have that vacancies there. Well, do you...
Let me take it in parts, though.
Okay.
Let me break it into parts. First off, let's, let's...
Let me make it easier. I move that we remove Mr. DeCiccio off Planning and Zoning Commission, because he was not qualified according to the charter.
Okay. And I need a second for that, please. We have a second from Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. So, we now have a vacancy on Planning and Zoning. Now, the second issue that arises is that you're saying that David Southern sits on two boards, and that he is agreeable, amenable to being removed from the, being, serving as an alternate on the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Let me clarify, too. We talked twice about this, because it was never my intention, and I don't believe it was intention of the council to have, unless we're that shorthanded, but we want to see lots of folks been able to serve on boards that hadn't served before. And so, when I talked to him about that, he verified that that is not a problem. He wants to serve on one board, and his primary choice is the Cemetery Board. So, this will be easy. Just remove him off Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Okay. I just want to point out that there are other individuals that are serving on two boards. And if that's the case, that you're stating that because they serve on one board, they can't serve on another, then we might need to broaden our scope of...
And I hope we do that next year. I hope we advertise more, and we do that. You know, that's...
No, I'm saying maybe on this upcoming meeting that we're going to be readdressing, but...
I'm not trying to open that up. Alls I'm trying to say is that Mr. Southern spoke to me very clearly, he wants to be on Cemetery Board, so I want to remove him from Zoning Board of Adjustment, and we can give somebody else another opportunity. That's all I'm saying.
Need that in the form of a motion, please.
I move that we remove Mr. Southern from the Zoning Board of Adjustments. That's my motion.
Need a second, please.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this item?
I'd like to have a...
That he's willing to step up some...
Wait a minute. Let me clarify this. Mr. Perkel, I spoke to him on the phone, and I can assure you that we talked twice, and he confirmed it. He even called me back the second time to thank me for talking to him about it the first time, and said, yes, he understands the two-board situation. He absolutely wants to serve on the Cemetery Board, and doesn't mind at all being removed, and even suggested we put somebody else on the zoning. And I would pray that you would trust me on that conversation, because you can verify it after we leave here tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor of removing David Southern as an alternate to serve on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note that there is one nay sayer, and that's Mr. Perkel. Motion carries. Moves us on to item number 10. And by the way, before we move on, this would probably be a good time to add an agenda item to clarify the boards. I believe, Mr. Allen, you started to request that we add boards back on to the agenda for a future meeting?
Yes.
For consideration?
Yes. What I said was that we're going to have two vacancies, from my understanding of the motion.
We do have two vacancies as we sit.
One for P N Z and other for Varanci. And I was wanting to put that on the agenda for February 7th, first meeting of February. And that way, we could have new applicants come in. Would that give us enough time, D, to advertise and...
Okay. Okay. Did you do it for both of them, though?
Can, Mr. Perkel, for clarification, would you read the section that relates to that, please? I need you to get closer to the microphone, so all can hear you.
This is under public notice, City Board. City Council is now accepting applications through January 3, 2012, for Planning and Zoning Commission. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, both boards require city citizenship, and one insurance agent to fulfill efficacy on the building standards, plumbing and adjustment, and field. Please call the City Secretary's Office at 7573-111412. Or at the... Or at the... Also, at the email. This is in the paper twice, back in the back. In the book, not in the paper.
Was that in Piper, right, you know, just written, or what? I just gave it her time. But you pointed out something there, Laurel. Is it actually three we need then, isn't it?
We are still having a vacancy as far as finding an insurance agent to serve on our Building Standards Board.
A good one's so hard to find, but I'll keep my eye open for them.
Those that live in the city are...
So, at this time, can I get a motion from you, Mr. Allen, that you would like to have that in the form of a motion to place the, fill the vacancies?
February 7.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Allen to fill the vacancies on February 7th for Zoning Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning, along with possibility of the Building Standards Board. Need a second, please.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion regarding this?
Mayor, my only discussion, I'd like to ask the question, how did this get in the paper when there never was an opening on the Zoning Board of Adjustment? How did they put this in the paper when the Zoning Board of Adjustments was filled? We just took... We just took the guy off tonight.
Because there was a vacancy in the Planning and Zoning.
It has nothing to do with the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
I don't, it's not my place to question the staff as to...
That wasn't even an opening.
Why that happened, or how it happened. All I know is that staff was, had the foresight to put it in there.
I want to make sure I don't get removed from office before I know about that.
All in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Very good point, man.
We are now moving to item number 10, folks. Item number 10.
Put it in there.
That's what I answered.
Item number 10, consider and approve the First Amendment to the hotel site lease for the Hilton Garden Inn, clarifying that the city is the owner of the hotel improvements and the personality therein. Back in 2005, the City Council entered into an agreement with TechMac and Tom Kirkland for the construction of a hotel and conference center pursuant to the terms of the Master Marina Agreement. Governing the construction of these buildings, the city owns both the conference center and the hotel, but it leases the hotel back to TechMac for operation as the Hilton Garden Inn pursuant to a hotel site lease. Mr. Kirkland met with the city attorney and discussed the provision in the hotel site lease that indicates that the hotel shall be owned by TechMac. This provision is contrary to the terms of the Master Marina Agreement, and as such, needs to be amended. Further, the hotel site lease contains a provision wherein "personality," that being the movable furniture, trade fixtures, supplies, and other personal property, shall be owned by TechMac unless TechMac requests that the "personality" be included in the properties owned by the city. TechMac has since requested that the "personality" be included in the items owned by the city under the terms of the lease. Counsel, I think what we have here are two separate items. I would like to break this into two parts, please. If so, I'd like to entertain a motion to split our discussion into two separate parts. One, the approval of clarification of hotel ownership, and the second part being approval of acceptance of the "personality."
Let me ask you this question, because we have talked about this before, not this particular issue, but there's been times we want to split items, and I'm always concerned that this is brought to us as one item, and I believe they both do interact each other, because they're the both, we're talking about the city, we're talking about the hotel, and so I don't want to see us make any kind of motion, or make any decision, one for the other, unless we get, unless we get all the facts, because I have a lot of questions about this, because this is, there's some information that I read about this, and in fact, Mayor, this has been an agreement that was signed in 2005, we're just now finding these discrepancies. I'd like to hear from Mr. Kirkland on several issues, and from our City Manager, and from our attorney on several issues, so...
Well, I can respect that, but what I'm trying to say is, I think we can move faster on the decision-making process by breaking it into two separate decisions. One, which is the clarification of who owns the hotel, and then the second part being the acceptance of the "personality" items. It's just a matter of trying to speed up this process. If you feel like it's pertinent that we hear from the Representative TechMac, Mr. Kirkland, regarding this on both items, I mean, that's fine. We're going to be hearing from him.
No, I think you explained it very well, so as long as we can have complete discussion, you're going to tackle the who owns the building first.
Exactly.
And secondly, you're going to tackle the merchandise inside.
That is correct. And I need to entertain a motion to split this into a decision into two parts.
Are we okay with that? I mean, legally?
Yes. Then we bind it back together at the tail end with a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
So we have a motion to split it, we have a second by Mr. Allen. Now let's proceed with the first part of it, which is clarification of hotel ownership. Ms...
No, it is...
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of splitting the decision, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you need to talk about this? Let's talk about this.
I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
Why would we go forward to doing that, when it's clearly safe here, that they are wanting to clarify that the city does in fact own the building and the items inside?
Why wouldn't one...
It's all one statement.
The reason I'd like that broken into two parts is I feel like the hotel ownership will pass like this, effectively, there's no argument over the hotel ownership, but there is some discussion issue over the "personality" items within the hotel.
Well, I mean, that's a good point, because I was, my big question, is there any problem? Is there some confrontation here? Has our city attorney got some information where he doesn't agree with Mr. Kirkland's attorneys or something? I mean, so are we all in agreement?
I'm just saying that let's break it into two parts, about the hotel ownership and the "personality." We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion regarding it?
There's no disagreement. Okay, good.
We're not contrary with Mr. Kirkland.
That's great, I mean, so I listen to what Mr. Hewlett said, and it has value.
Okay. So we have a motion. All in favor of splitting the decision into two parts, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This time, we'll first tackle the section of this agreement that has to do with the hotel ownership. Mr. Kirkland, if I can call you to the podium, please, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I believe you were the one that actually brought this to the attention of the city attorney.
That's correct, I did.
Can we just pass the first one? Can we make a motion and just pass the first one and get to the second one?
If we grill that, let's just pass it.
Well, I was going to hear from him to make sure that he's the one that brought it forward, and he's in agreement with this.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the portion of the document that clarifies the hotel ownership.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Parsons. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any other discussion regarding that portion of it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now then, let's move on to the acceptance of the "personalities." Mr. Kirkland, can you explain why this particular portion of the amendment is being brought to council, please, sir?
Yes, sir, I will, and let me point out that what we're really talking about, a big part of, is what's contained in the hotel site lease, and trying to get it consistent with the Master Marina Agreement. And in particular...
Well, I think we just did that with the language of ownership.
I agree with that, but I need to have some summary on that, because at the time that all of this was entered into, and there were lots, lots of discussions concerning the Master Marina Agreement and the hotel site lease that happened years ago when it was put together, before the city had its own city attorney, Houston Attorney, out of Fort Worth, when we put all of this together, normally, normally, what you see in a ground lease is that the lessor continues to own the dirt, and the lesssee will own the improvements, fixtures, et cetera, until the end of the lease term. And at the end of the lease term, it then reverts to the ownership of the land. What we had here in this one was the city's insistence, for a number of valid reasons, that it would take title the minute a certificate of occupancy was entered, that it would own the improvements of the land, being the hotel, and the fixtures contained therein. And the purpose behind that was because if we, being the lesssee, violated the terms of our lease, then the city could simply step in with a new operator, continue on with the franchise with Hilton, only with the new lesssee, and they could do that almost seamlessly without much difficulty therein. And so if what you do, though, is separate the, and when we use the term "personality," let me say this, we're not talking about what we currently use in the operation of our hotel, the towels and the sheets and the food and the beverages and all that that we use in normal operations of a hotel. That's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about here is what is generally termed FFNE. We're talking about granite, we're talking about air conditioning, we're talking about light fixtures, we're talking about boilers and hot water heaters, et cetera. Wall vinyl, those things that become permanent fixtures within the hotel that are key to its ongoing operations. And so, we have always considered those being as part of what the city owns. And in the process, and one of the reasons this is coming up is because of one provision in the lease in 6.01 that says, "The hotel shall be owned and operated by the tenant." And what we're trying to do here is be sure we define what it is that the city owns pursuant to the hotel. It's important to us, because we took the position back at the very beginning, that the city owned these items and therefore were tax exempt in regard to sales tax from the comptroller's office. We are in the midst of a sales tax audit. No problem with that, because everything that we've done from the date that we've opened the hotel forward, operation-wise, we paid sales tax on everything that we acquired as an operator of the hotel. The problem is now to look backwards to try to figure out by the comptroller's office, who really owns these, and should we have, should these items have been exempt or not exempt? That's our issue. We took the position in the very beginning and notified the various vendors, whatever, that this project was in fact owned by the city of Granbury. The benefit to us, obviously, is to correct what the comptroller has pointed out was a deficiency in that this one provision that said the hotel shall be owned and operated by tenant is not accurate, and it is an ambiguity with the rest of the lease agreement.
Well, I want to stop you just for a second. You understand, that's why I wanted to break it apart into two parts. Breaking out the fact that we are all on board with the fact that it's owned by the city.
Right.
But the issue arises with the word "personality."
Right.
In the agreement, and I want to point you to a section of the agreement, Article 1, "Demise in Term," and I want to bring to your attention a sentence in there that states that "but specifically excluding, unless requested by tenant..."
Right.
"...to be included, removable furniture, trade fixtures, supplies, and other personal property," quote-unquote "personality." Now, in my mind, everything else that you see listed up above that section of the deal is exactly what you said that you paid sales tax on when you purchased it, as a elevator, the heating, the air conditioning, lighting, fire control, and that's all included in the improvements, that those would belong to the city. But you're also asking, at this point, you're asking us to assign the "personality" to the city of Granbury. And the "personality" in my mind is the day-to-day furniture and fixtures that you can remove, that's like a coffee pot, that's like a computer, trade fixtures, those kinds of supplies that you use in your day-to-day operations. And I've got a question whether or not we're talking about the same thing here, because it's clearly spelled out in this portion of the document, that the ventilation, air conditioning equipment, electrical wiring, computer telecommunications, all that is already covered. So maybe I need clarification from you as to what your understanding of "personality" is.
Well, I think I just kind of gave my definition of "personality." I think it's just those items that are affixed to the property. And the problem with, there's really not a problem in the way the city and us have defined what belongs to us and what not. Where it talks about with the request of the tenant, we treated that from the inception as belonging to the city. We issued exemption certificates to the various vendors for the granite, for the various items with that. I'm not sure what this really means by different than formally requested by the tenant. That's what we've done. The problem arises here in that if it's allowed, if it's not corrected, what I worry about is there's a precedence out there that these items do not belong to the city. And if, for instance, we, as a tenant, violate our lease, then there could be either us as tenants, or creditors of us as tenants, could take the position that this is in fact owned by the tenant.
Mayor, I have a question, Mr. Kirkland.
And not the city. And if you carry that one step further, too, that would be, for instance, a lender or buyer, or like I said, against any creditor, would be able to take the position that those items of substance that we're talking about are not integral to the hotel and are therefore removable from the property. And I think at that point, then the city loses its ability to retain those as property of the improvements, and it was never the intention to do so. Neither is it our intention here to try to include anything that's on the operating side.
Mayor?
But I would talk to you, too, when you're talking about removable furniture, is really an interesting concept there, because it's really affixed to the wall.
But the beds, for instance?
Yes. Yeah, the headboards and the bases are actually fixed, just like the televisions are affixed to the granite of the hotel. Now, like I said, again, we're not talking about sheets or towels or anything we use, but these are, the lighting, the lighting's affixed to the walls, it's affixed to the, it's normally what you would consider FFNE items. And if we can more artfully do it in drafting, but I think it simplifies and corrects this so there's no misunderstanding as to what the city owns and what the tenant owns.
Counselman, go ahead and ask your question, please.
Thank you, I have a question of Mr. Kirkland and the city staff. Mr. Kirkland, from what I've heard, with the audit coming on, you found these discrepancies, this will be a good thing for the hotel, to clean this up and move forward, clarify it for the city?
Yes.
Okay, and so I need to ask our City Manager, is there any tax liability cost to our citizens in the future? Do you see any kind of financial gain or loss by us approving this tonight?
Well, I want to clarify, first of all, you have never depreciated these assets on your books, is that true?
We have not depreciated these assets.
You have treated the assets, like you said, you've always treated them as belonging to the city.
Well, we have depreciated them, because we in fact paid for them. And according to what our accountants at CPA have said, that is a permissible thing.
Okay, I think that's going to hurt you in your argument, that it never belonged to you, because it's hard to depreciate something you don't own.
Well, it's hard to depreciate something you don't pay for, and the fact that we've paid for it, we've got it leased on a long-term lease, has enabled us to be able to depreciate. It's two different things, but you're right, I mean, that's certainly an argument.
So my question to staff is, do you see any financial gain or loss by us doing this?
You will continue to pay the abolumen taxes on the building and these properties? That's in the agreement?
Absolutely, we have.
Okay, so therefore, what this would do is, we have not set this asset on our books. This would actually, we would set this asset on our books, which would improve our equity level, okay?
We have, they have...
Well, that's what I was...
We can't both be claiming depreciation on these items, and...
I don't think you'll be able to claim it anymore after this.
Mr. McKethston brings up a good point. In years past, up to this point, I'm concerned that in your IRS filings, as a corporation, that you have laid claim to these items, and yet now you're wanting them to be written off as belonging to the city, and... I'm just curious, i- if you've taken into consideration what we're talking about here, sir? Uh, and, and while, while you're thinking about what I just said, I'd like a clarification as to what our city attorney considers to be "personality," please. Definition?
I've done a lot of research on this issue, and, because it does predate my time with the city. And what I've found out from talking to the prior city attorney, talking to other people involved with the project, is that it was, it was the intention of the city from the very beginning of this project in '05, that the building and the fixtures attached to the building would be the property of the city, but the man, but the operation of the hotel would be Mr. Kirkland's responsibility. And I think you see that in the hotel site lease. And you do see the first issue, and I highlighted it in your packets for you, where you can see that their master marine agreement does say that the hotel will belong to the city, but then the lease didn't. And you, you, you fixed that. And you also see in the, in the section of the lease under Article One, the part that Mr. Kirkland and the mayor are talking about with the definition of "personality." I think it probably does include the FFNE stuff, but I think it also probably includes any movable furniture because it says it includes movable furniture. You know, I think that would be chairs. I mean, it defines it in there. And I think it also includes trade fixtures, which would be mirrors and stuff attached to the wall. That's the granite and the, uh, countertops that Mr. Kirkland is talking about. And it talks about other personal property and supplies. That's probably a little, a little ambiguous. I don't think it's going to mean soap and shampoo and toilet paper, but it probably does mean...
Or food items for that matter.
It's not going to include food, I don't think.
Beverage?
But mattresses, probably so. Things that you would use, um, that would be attached to beds and whatnot. My conclusion in, in all of this, and from talking to the other attorneys and the other people involved in the project, was that from the very beginning, because it was, this project was meant to be owned by the city and the property of the city, that, um, I don't have a problem with the, with the city taking on the "personality," especially when you consider Article 12 of the site lease, which specifically says, "The sales taxes and the abhorrent taxes be paid by the tenant," which is Mr. Kirkland. So I don't see any liability for the city there.
Well, and I, I would agree. I have no problem, um, of, of taking on the ownership, but I was concerned about TEC MAC because the, the, the income tax impact of having to reverse that depreciation.
Yeah, and I will double check that. And let me, just for correction here, the, the, the tenant that we're calling this Granbury Marina Hotel LP.
Okay.
Not, not TEC MAC. TEC MAC was mainly the developer. So it's Granbury Marina Hotel LP is the, is the tenant on this. But I do have, uh, and I showed Stuart this when we were visiting, I do have, uh, some emails and other documents from our CPAs when we were putting this together, because I had that very same issue. If I'm going to be paying for the FFNE, uh, yet it doesn't belong to me, yet I have a long-term lease leasing it back, am I going to be able to depreciate those assets? And the answer I got back was...
Can I get you to stand up at the microphone for me, please?
Yes. For, for, for income tax purposes, the partnership would depreciate all of the assets using their regular depreciable laws. But the end of the ground lease, uh, any remaining tax cost would be real.
As, as an option, what you may be able to do is to use that payment of the purchase as a rental amortized over the, the length of the loan, then we'll come in and depreciate it on our side, okay? Because we don't really care, we, you know, we don't pay income tax.
Right.
And so, but I would just caution you to go and talk to your CPAs about that.
I, I will do that, uh, Wayne, and I will have, I may have, uh, of them try, try to make contact with you on that.
Mr. Kirkland, can I ask a question? Uh, it may have been sort of mixed up in the terminology a while ago, but, uh, did you refer to the fact that these assets are under a long-term lease with the city, or that, that you have them leased from someone?
No, no. They're...
They're free, I mean, or, my question, I guess, basically, is you have...
Right. They're all paid for.
You have title, treaty.
But they're subject to our operating lease with the city.
So you have title, you have clear title to all the assets?
Correct.
What, what is the, uh, so, I guess the, the sum total here is, are we're looking at a, a sales tax audit? And so we need a definition of the "personality" as being, belonging to the city? And then, having that definition, then the sales tax is abated? Is that correct?
You know, I, I, it's hard for me to tell you what the end result is. I will tell you that during the, the, the process, and we're just on the front side of the audit, and where we're providing them documentation, and part of what they asked to see was the master marine agreement and the sale, and the ground lease.
Uh-huh.
And they're the ones that pointed out that, and it first started out, the biggest point was the ownership of the hotel because of that specific provision, uh, on, in the middle of page 12, that really wasn't talking about ownership, it's really talking about operating the hotel. But unfortunately, until you have others that are looking at your agreements in total detail, you can't really figure out all the nuances of the verbiage until later. And that's what's happened. They basically pointed out that in the middle of page 12 of the site lease, it says, "The hotel shall be owned and operated by the tenant." That's us. Yet, other parts of the lease and the master marine agreement specifically say that's not the case. The hotel and its improvements belong to the city of Granbury. And what I'm simply saying is, we need to correct that.
Okay.
But that, that's certainly not...
Well, what we're, what we're looking at in I, in our book here is, under Article One, under "Demise and Term," could we, uh, get, uh, Mr. Kirkland a copy of that so he could see that? And I guess this is out of the, the lease agreement. But it does specifically define what building is, and then it does specifically define what "personality" is.
Correct.
Now then, I think what you're telling me is, is that, uh, you would agree with the definition of "personality" here, which would be removable furniture, trade fixtures, but the other sup- this word "supplies and other personal property," is you think you would like to exclude that from this agreement?
We have alw-
Whereas supplies, whenever I think of supplies, would be the towels, it would be the soap.
Right. And we have always...
Would be the eggs. Right?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
Okay. So, in, in crafting this, do you want us to exclude the supplies and other personal property from our definition?
I, I am fine with that. I think that's, that's what we, we argue. Yes, sir.
I, I think Mickey's bringing up the point that I was trying to make. We, we need to draw the line because in the document, it says this certain section is "personality," and it includes those kind of items.
I agree.
And, uh, we need to clarify what is considered a furniture fixture. And, uh, and I'm looking at our proposal of an amendment, and perhaps we need to take that back to the attorney and, and your party to, uh, allow some clarification and then bring this back to the council for final approval.
I, I would agree with that, and, and have it more mirror the specific language here, uh, with that, with the exclusion of the supplies and other personal property.
So, at, at this point, uh, we, we've made an agreement on, if you'll look at the, uh, proposed amendment, uh, council members, under Part Two, ownership of "personality," we're talking about changing, uh, Section B, which is who owns the property. Uh, A and B, we need to do some clarification with that section. And where does it mention the, uh, ownership of the hotel at? Because I thought that was, uh, six point oh one, and it's slided underneath the, uh, title of "Ownership of Personality." It should be a separate item, should it not, Counselman?
Well...
I mean, Counselor?
You can word it that way, but that's, six point oh one A is the section of the lease that refers to that, the ambiguity. I mean, if you want to make that, instead of making that a bullet point B, if you want to make it a, a number three, you can do that.
Okay. At, at this time, I'd entertain a motion for, uh, our city attorney to work with the, uh, other party to try to resolve this and, uh, bring it back to council at the, uh, February's, uh, give me a, a date, please.
I have a couple of last names.
February 7th.
Wait, that's the first meeting.
First meeting of February.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Need a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parson. Any further discussion regarding, uh, postponing this till February 7th meeting? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Anybody opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Appreciate the good job you guys have done down there. Certainly appreciate you in town, and we've, we've got a beautiful property, and you'll take great care of it, and you take great care of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a short recess, and we'll be back in about fifteen minutes. At this time, we'll reconvene our meeting. Moving on to item number 11. Consider and approve an ordinance abolishing the Tourism Advisory Board and amending the Code of Ordinances to reflect the changes made by this ordinance. This item was requested by Councilperson Tyra. I'm going to read an email from him, just for clarification. "At the January 3rd, 2012 meeting of the council, please place an item on the agenda for the council to deliberate and take action on dissolving the tourism board effective immediately." Uh, he's copied Stuart and, for the proper language. Uh, Councilman Tyra, since you brought this meeting, I mean, this item to our meeting, if you would, please lead off the discussion regarding it.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I appreciate Dee putting my email in there so everybody can understand what I'm trying to accomplish here, because it's worded, um, "Consider and approve." And I will promise you that once it's worded properly and it's on the agenda, councilmen do get phone calls. And that's what this process is all about, getting people to the meeting, being able to discuss things in an open manner, and then finally letting the council make a vote and move forward. First of all, I want to say that when I walked in, I, I missed Mr. Baker's comments, and I apologize for being late. I'm, I'm working in downtown Fort Worth. I'd spoken with Mr. Baker this week, so I, I understand where he's at on this and appreciate that. Uh, but I did get here in the middle of Mr. Young's comments, and when I heard Mr. Young say that what he heard was, there was no need for citizens' involvement, or if that's the way he received it, I apologize, Scott, because that's not what this is about. This is about all citizens being involved in all groups. And the fact is that a year ago, actually December, this council that I was a part of, and am a part of, we put this tourism group into action with a lot of controversy back and forth, who was going to be on it. And, and it was, it was somewhat controversy in some areas. But what we all agreed to, whether you live in Granbury, or you have something that you want people to visit on Highway 144 or Acton, what we all agreed to is that we all want to see the promotion of regional tourism, because when you see that happen, you will see, as we've seen in the past, you will see our hotels and our restaurants and our sales taxes. It's going to be good for everybody. Let me get to the point here, that, that last speaker, and Jim Leach, and I appreciate everything everybody's done. And Jim, I've talked to Jim many times and been able to hear, and as a council member, see what this organization's done. I have resented some of the phone calls that I received about me taking a negative spin. This is a positive situation. This is a situation where we, me, I want to put forward here and thank this tourism board for what they've done. We were in a situation, we had no guidance and no direction, and this tourism board stepped up as volunteers and did something that this city has never done before. And we, as a council, took action, bold action, and it was against what I believe in, in that we created another layer of government. But that's okay. It, it served a fantastic purpose. My goal here tonight is to ask my colleagues to vote, to abolish the tourism board for several reasons. I will give you a couple of those. First of all, it was said when I came in, I heard one of the speakers say they could tell us, they could help us solve the problem. We don't believe, I don't believe there is a problem. I think this board has served the community very well. What I do believe is that now that the city has a marketing director, that now the city staff needs to be able to move forward in a very positive light. And we need to shake hands with the tourism board and say, "Thank you for everything you've done," and let's allow our city staff, this marketing arm of the city, to move in a direction that that staff and the city manager and that division from the, from the staff comes out. And, and, and let me make sure everybody understands this, because I've told this to several folks, is that if there's a, a date in the future where staff come for, comes forward and says, "Hey, we need to do this or this or that, and we need these appointees and that appointees." I mean, that's going to be a great thing, but it's going to be done by a professional staff and a city manager that wasn't in place at the time. So please, please, nobody take anything like this negative. HGMA has done absolutely more than I could ever accomplish and ever hear of. I get emails, I see the promotion that's done, and then I see what the chamber's done. Oh my gosh, the chamber's done some great things, but now, and we've got a bed and breakfast entity, we've got a hotel entity, and I know that we in good faith did this, and I was a part of that. I'm saying to the public, please, folks, take a deep breath, everything's okay. You all started something that's positive and great, and now let's abolish this tourism board and allow staff to move forward. And trust me, I guarantee you, the way that you all showed us what can be done in this last year, under this bad, tough economic time, you saw what's happening with Opera House, we're moving forward with that, we're fixing to see an explosion. And I'm saying, let's, let's keep the folks and everybody all together on one page, and let's be very positive about this. And if staff comes forward in the future, you're going to see me step up plate and say, "Give it to us." You know, let, let's hear it. What, what, what does that look like? Because what it looks like right now is not something I think we should hand over to staff. We should how, allow staff to, to go fresh forward. You all have done your thing and did it in a positive, exciting way. Now let's see that being built on. And I believe that you all can actually be a big part of that by meeting with her, our new marketing director, and talking individually, and let's, let this happen. So, nothing, nothing negative, colleagues. I will be glad to speak to any detail. There, I have had some other information come forward, uh, that, that gives other reasons. I don't wish to share this because I think that everything looks really good to move forward and allow our staff the opportunity to do whatever that staff and that new city manager wants to do. And thank you so much, Tourism Board. And just for the record, I want to read the names of the folks who have served this community for the last year because they have personally, and, and I know that, I've, I've talked to several folks, that not everybody can make the meetings. I say it's kind of like church. You know, you get a big group of folks and, you know, certain people do the work, some people are busy. That's how it works and everything. But let me thank Carla Bandera, Terry Beck, Cindy Hyde, Jim Leach, Chris Kristen, Jim Good, Mary Saltaroe, Susan Sedwan, Larry Cox, and, and then our ex-official Charlie Michaelvein. We thank you all very much for what you've done. And I'm asking my colleagues to please, let's move forward in a positive light and don't turn this into any kind of negative bashing of each other or any individual in the tourism group, or anybody on staff for that matter. Thank you.
Okay. We've heard from, uh, the person who brought the item to our agenda. Now, anybody on council want to speak with regards to this item?
I will, Mayor.
Mr. Allen, take the floor.
First of all, I...
And I need you to work the microphone for me, please, sir, so I can hear you.
It's too short. I, uh, first of all, I'm like, Mr. Tyra here, I, I do think that it was formed at the right time, at the right ti- at the right place. I have talked to most of the board members, I've been to about four of the board member, uh, meetings. Couple of times, it wasn't a forum there that they could vote, which is kind of bad, but they don't get paid to be on there, so we don't expect to be there every meeting. But, uh, I know we've got a great downtown merchants association, I know Scott's done a great job since he took over down there. Uh, I know we're, we're moving in the right direction in a lot of areas. But as a councilman, I get a lot of calls from people outside of the downtown area in saying, "Why ain't I involved? Why don't I get a chance to get some advertising money? Why's all the dollars got to be spent downtown? Why can't it be spent on 377 or 144, you know?" Well, you try to explain to them that the downtown area is what brings people to Granbury. Well, I had a guy over the weekend disagreed with me. He said, excuse me, he said, "I brought 5,000 people in here for the, uh, for the, uh, Rio Brass's." He said, "I'm going to bring 15,000 in this summer." He said, "But I'm not in the city limits, but I should be part of it." And Jim said today at the meeting, and he said it again tonight, uh, Leach, that we need to extend that out to go further. And I agree with that because whatever we can do in, in Hood County benefits Granbury. If we bring something into Acton, or, or out at Rio Brass's, or at the windmill place, if it's a big enough people that come there, big enough party, we're all going to benefit from it. And I think with, with our new lady in charge, and she has not made a mark either way about it, she wanted or don't want... it, she wants it or don't want it, so this is something that Mitch came up with, I did talk with Mitch about it a couple of times, haven't talked to him since New Year's, I don't believe, but you know, I think if you hire new employees, just like any of y'all that own a business out there, you've got to give them time, you've got to give them room to grow. Let her get acquainted with people in our town, our county, and it's something that I think that we do need, I talked with Mike Scott today with Chamber of Commerce, he agreed, he thought we might have made some mistakes in the past, but he thinks we do need a board. And I think it's something that we should do away with, let her bring it back before the council, if it's three months from now, or six months from now, when she feels like it's time to be, to put a board together, to put one out like Jim's saying, let's reach the whole county, not just the downtown area, not just the part of the town, let's hit everybody, let's hit 377, let's hit 144, let's hit Pearl Street, let's hit everybody. And let everybody have part of this action, and not just a group. And I'm part of that group, I'm a downtown merchant, I guess you'd consider it my business, but still, it affects us, whatever happens, all over the county. So, I am for getting rid of it, and not a permit fix, but give her time to get her feet on the ground, and see what she wants to do to set it up. And we can't, as a council, can't tell her what to do, or how to do it, she works directly for Wayne, and, but I think you've got to give everybody time to grow. And we were out one for two years, six months, it's not going to be that much longer. So, I know she's done more in two weeks than what we've done the last year. Saved us a lot of money with the Hudson Group, I'm not saying it was a bad deal for anybody, we, the council, voted on that deal. But we found out quickly that we lost a lot of money. She figured it out in two weeks, and saved us a lot of money. So I think we need to dissolve it, start back in three months, six months, when she feels like it's time, or the city, or Wayne, and go with it. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Can I hear from anybody on my left?
Mayor, I'd like to make one statement. I went to the Tourism Board meeting today, and I've been to several of them, a few of them, they don't even have, they didn't even have a forum, but that's, you know, that could happen anywhere. But the one thing I did hear from a lot of the people on that board was that they would like to see it, they said this herself, that they would like to see it a more relaxed, a more personal group of people, and I do agree that, I think somebody mentioned that they'd like to see a, they'd still like to see a collective way to get the information from the citizens to the council, to the city, and I agree with that. I believe that there ought to be a way that they could do that, and maybe going forward after the elimination of something like this, which is probably, you know, when you look at something that large, it's probably the best way to do it, was, and to consider possibly a staff, a staff-appointed council, or a group of people that could do, and I think Jim brought that idea up to mind, so that there is still a connection for people, or for the citizens, and for the downtown area, to at least get in there and to voice some opinions, or some ideas, or come up with some concerns, and to help our new Shannon out. I mean, because she's going to be looking for that kind of connection from the people out there, to go ahead and give her information, but I don't think it has to be on a board, a board situation right now. I think it could be just informal, or it could be some kind of a appointed staff, or some, something like that, that they could work together with. So, you know, I too appreciate what they have done. I, like I say, the meetings that I went to, they've talked a lot of things, that as big as it is, it takes a lot of time to get approved, once it comes up to them, once they all approve it, once they all agree on it, then it goes to the council, I mean, it just buys a lot of time.
Thank you, Mr. Hewlett. Mr. Parson, have any comments?
I've had a lot of input on this issue, and all of it has been from citizens of our city, and they all indicate to me that they would like to see this advisory board continue. I haven't heard any reasons tonight that would indicate that we need to terminate the agreement. We have not had city staff come forward and ask us to abolish this board. I heard today at the meeting that I was at, that there was a lot of input between the citizens of the city, and citizens on this board, and staff. There was a lot of learning process going on. I would hate to see us ruin this learning process right in the middle of it. I would suggest, instead of abolishing this committee, that we continue with this committee, and we direct them to come up with new direction. If that includes expanding it, opening it up, or changing it, or demolishing it, let's use that advice rather than this. We know that HGMA supports it, I just heard Tony say that he talked to the Chamber of Commerce, and they support this. I have, I have a responsibility to my community to support it, but I have no responsibility sitting here where I am tonight, outside of the city limits of Granbury. Now then, as it relates to Rio Brazos, it's a great place, I like it, and as a matter of fact, the Visit Granbury, which came out of the Tourism Advisory Board, the Facebook page that promotes Granbury, had a specific promotion on there promoting the New Year's Eve celebration at Rio Brazos. They gave away tickets for that event, so there was a cross-promotion between what the city does and Rio Brazos. I would invite other people in the community to come forward to cross-promote. That's been one of our issues, how do, where do we get the citizens to involve? I would prefer that we keep the Tourism Advisory Board to help Shannon adapt to her new job, to offer her this board with their expertise, with their opinions, with their ideas, they've done a great job for us in this past year. All of the marketing that we've done in the past year has been because of this board. The ideas that came forward, that Shannon was able to look at, and to adjust, and to make suggestions about, came out of the result of that board and their efforts with the Hudson Group. So I would suggest that we keep this board, move forward with it, ask them to come back with recommendations as to how the board might be adjusted, or changed, and/or abolished, and not make that decision at this level at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parson.
Mayor McRae.
Hang on. Nope, not just yet. We'll give you a rebuttal here in a second. Mr. Perkel?
Well, I thought I was going to be last, but I guess the more goes talk after me. One thing I'll say is, she's wonderful, but I'll tell you, one person can't do this job. And she'll tell you herself, she can't do this job by herself, she's got to rely on everybody in this building, and on this board, because there's things that she doesn't know, she won't know for three to five years. I've lived here 33 years, I still don't know everything, or how to do everything. If I did, I'd be a multimillionaire. What I'm saying is, again, some people may dislike the way the board has done things, but she's got to have a sounding board. If you can't sound something off of a person that's in the same field, or the same expertise, you're lost, you're literally lost. That's why businesses have gone out of business. Those on the square, all I'm saying is, a lot of them have not had a business plan when they went in. And that's, that's a problem. We need to find somebody to possibly help these people when they kind of want to start a business, to help to start a business plan. But my whole point is, give her a chance to work with these groups. They don't tell her what to do, they don't tell us what to do, they can't tell us what to do. But they can suggest things to us, that we can let her look at, or she can go to them directly. You know, I'm not saying up here, I know everything about Granbury, about tourism, but I've lived through the bad, and I've lived through the good. And right now, we look like 1960. And those of you, I wasn't around here for them, but I lived with Weatherford, and so you know, it's a situation that, you know, we've got to give her hell. When she needs to ask for somebody, she needs to have somebody that can step in and give her some expertise, say, "This is what you need to do, because this is what's happening." Not, "Let's cut them off at the legs right now." Okay, they may come back. You may want to reorganize the organization, it doesn't have to be real formal, in my opinion. It's just when a group gets together, when you get a group of people together, and they sit there, and they talk about what's going on, what they see, ideas are going to come forth that will help the city grow. And that's what I'm here for, I'll say, I've been here 32 years, I'm planning on being buried out at Acton, so it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkel. Now, at this time, I'd like to speak on this matter, and then we'll turn it over for rebuttal from anybody who wants to speak. "It's my opinion that the formation of the Tourism Advisory Board was the council's way of allowing the citizens an opportunity to assist with the direction of any type of tourism-related issues that affected our community, and a means to allow and opportunity to voice their opinions. Remember almost one year ago, that when the public was given notice of the formation of this board, our council received 23 applications for nine board placements? Never before had there been such an overwhelming acceptance of a board by this community. As such, the terms of the board members were set for two and three years, because we, as a council, felt it was essential to create a longstanding solution to help with the void that was felt in the tourism industry. With a revision of the Tourism Board ordinance, the original intent of the board can be reestablished without the need to follow Open Meetings Act protocol, which has been reported by some on the board as a hindrance in their decision-making. Bear in mind that there was a need to have the board recommend direction and present decision-making to this council. However, with the employment of a marketing director on the city staff, the board can still serve exclusively in an advisory role, no longer being the decision-maker of policy or marketing direction, and bringing it to council for a red stamp. That's when you cross the line as far as open meetings. If you can keep it solely an advisory group, not bringing forth decisions, decisions will come through the board by way of our marketing director to council. That loosens up the Open Meetings Act. It will require a rewriting of our ordinance to accommodate that. But from this group, our marketing director can ascertain an input on a regular basis, she can get the pulse of the community, she could develop workshop committees, which can serve as a think-tank to assist on getting marketing where we need it, and where we need it the most. When first directed on this, or first suggested about this board, we suggested having a representative styled board, one with input from area organizations, much is what you've heard, not so much from individuals, as it has turned out to be. To serve the community, we should not abolish this board, but modify it in such a way as to allow the local associations, whether they be the Chamber of Commerce, the Historic Granbury Merchants Association, Bed and Breakfast Association, the Realtors Association, the restaurateurs, the hoteliers, or even citizens. Give them a voice by having them supply us with a representative to sit upon the board. The city has grown through several transitions relating to tourism, and this council should be willing to give this board a chance to get its feet on the ground before we pull the rug out from underneath them and abolish it. Just because the city has found a person with marketing experience, it doesn't mean she doesn't need community input, and that, after all, was the purpose for this board when it was formed, less than a year ago. Turn it over to you, Councilman Tyra.
I believe Councilman Allen has something to say.
All right, Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say, I know a lot of y'all out there own buildings on the square, I know one or maybe two of the councilmen here own buildings on the square. That's important to us, as landlords, or as owner of buildings. I'm not recommending this to hurt anybody. Out there, or my fellow councilman over here, Mr. Perkel, but here's the whole deal. The Chamber of Commerce said, Mickey, that they did think that we need a board, that they think we need to redo the board, and it might take three months, six months to do it. But he did say, that I talked to Mike Scott, said, that he did think we did need it, but we need to get reorganized and get it done. If you talk to any restaurant owner, they'll tell you, they've never been talked to about anything going on at this board, period. If you talk to any hotel, I guarantee you, I bet there's not three that says, "Yeah, they come and talk to me about it." If you're going to have an organization or a board, you've got to let everybody know what's going on. When we set up this board, I had a deal, and I did the waterfront association this way, and I thought it would work here, but we didn't get exactly what I wanted, got a little of it. But let's say if we had one person on there that took care of the Bed and Brazos and Hotel, which is Jim Leach, and Jim, he's a black man, I apologize, yes, that's a helping, and they dealt with these people directly. Then we got the whole city involved, not just the Bed and Brazos on the square, we got them all over town. We don't have the hotel just here in town, we've got all the hotels involved. But that's not happening, and I think it's just a matter of reorganizing, regrouping. I say, no, let's don't get rid of it forever, no, I would not. I think we've got the right thing going. But when you bring somebody new into your business, you've got to, you've got to help them, you've got to work with them. And I think the board we got's done a great job. I think there's some ways that we can make it better. I think the deal, I keep going back to Jim Leach, I know Mickey said it, he was worried about his people here in the city of Granbury, well, I am too, but it's the people outside of Granbury where y'all get y'all's money from, period, that comes into town. So we may have to cater to somebody outside the city limits of Granbury. We may have to cater and footwork to get them here at Dallas, but it puts dollars in every one of y'all's pockets out there, in tax revenue, in our city. So, I think that, you know, we're in the right direction, but we need to re-change it, and that's all I say.
Mayor, I have a motion. Go ahead.
I move to approve the ordinance to abolish the Tourism Advisory Board and amend the Code of Ordinances.
We have a motion to abolish and amend the Code of Ordinances relating to the Tourism Advisory Board. Need a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Allen. Carry on some discussion regarding this. Mr. Allen, I want to point out that in your rebuttal just now, you stated emphatically that we need to redo the board. You even stated, "Don't get rid of the board."
No, no.
I wrote it down as-
Yeah, but it's-
I wrote it down as you said it, sir, because I was surprised to hear you, hear the language come from you, because you actually said, "Don't get rid of the board, redo the board," you specifically stated. And I want you to understand, what we have at issue here before us is abolishing the board. We can easily go back, modify our ordinance to reflect any changes that we want to. We can continue the board as it is, it's an advisory board, we can restructure it. So it takes two to three months for us to do that. So we come back and modify it. It will take us even longer to reestablish a board in the first place. We've already, initially when we did this, it took us three months to establish the board, to get the applicants in, to finalize the language, and all of the rest of it that's entailed in establishing a Tourism Advisory Board, passing the ordinances, it took a total of three months. We started the process in December. If we go back to square one, you're looking at another three-month lag to get the board established. We have a board established, all we would have to do, in one council meeting, is come up to a consensus on how to restructure the ordinance to reflect what we've heard, which is developing some sort of a representative board. Anybody else, discussion?
Mayor, I got some more.
Hang on just a sec. Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. Hewlett.
Mayor, are you saying, and maybe I'd need to direct this to attorney, whatever, but can we, can we take and table this, or take and move this to a, change the board, change the existing board tonight, and make a motion to do such, and change it to something else?
What we have at issue right now is, we have a motion on the floor to abolish. If we were to follow the motion with further a motion to restructure it, we could do that on another agenda, but not tonight, okay? Just so you understand.
Mayor-
Okay.
Let me ask you something, Mayor.
Well, it's not tabling, it's-
But we could table this whole thing tonight.
You could take no action on it.
And if we came back and-
But then we've got a motion on the floor, just so you understand. A motion precedes tabling, okay? So for, right now, we've got a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Mr. Tyra, you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I wanted to rebuttal. The, let's make sure that everybody understands, and I appreciate what you said, because the fact is, the reason it took three months to design this board, and this is not about the people on the board, or the community, this is about the design and the layout, and you had a bunch of elected officials doing it, that's why it took three months, and we're very blessed that we had the outcome that we did. And so, this is not about the individuals, not about miscommunicating with anybody, we're at a time- We're at a time where it's time to move forward, because we are not starting over to square one. We have moved way past square one. I'm asking my colleagues to vote to approve the ordinance to abolish, that way, there's no responsibility to staff, no responsibility to our manager, we take the heat, like we should, because we're responsible elected officials, and then, don't put any timelines, let staff mold and shape, working with all these folks, everybody, and then come back to us, but don't, please, let's don't put dates and encumber staff with something else. So, I'm pleading with you all, this is, don't make this negative, this is very positive, let's, let's move forward and allow it to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Point of order, call for question.
I got one, one thing.
Hang on, just a second.
Call the question.
The call for question requires a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. There's, uh, there's no discussion on that call for question. All in favor of calling for the question, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
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 I need a show of hands, just for clarification, all in favor, raise your hand.
This is a call for the question.
This is a call for the question. That motion carries, that brings us up to the call for the question, all in favor of abolishing the Tourism Board, along with adjusting the Code of Ordinances to reflect that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Once again, I need a show of hands, all in favor, please raise your hand. We have, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did, did I see your hand or not, sir?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please, please raise your hand, so I can get, we have two. Those opposed, raise your hands, we have three. So, at this time, we will continue discussion. We can continue discussion regarding the possible placement on a future agenda item to restructure our ordinance regarding the Tourism Board. Any, anybody want to supply me with a motion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
And we have a motion by Mr. Allen to readdress the ordinance regarding the Tourism Advisory Board, need a second.
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Hewlett. Any discussion regarding this?
Yes, this is gonna be something that the elected officials are gonna try to re-manipulate and do again, or we're gonna turn it over to staff? Can we turn it over to staff, to let them come back with something?
That's not for us, what, what we have right now is to have the item brought back before council.
Okay.
I would hope that we're gonna get some staff input.
Okay.
We're gonna get some input from the community as well.
Okay.
And then we will make a decision on how to restructure that ordinance to accommodate those kind of changes. My hope is, that we have an existing ordinance, and perhaps our staff will work with these, with the Tourism Advisory Board that's currently in existence, and come up with some new structure, and brings forward some language that we can address at that upcoming meeting, and...
Do we have a date in that meeting?
If we have that happen, then we'll move forward. I have yet to hear a date, I just have a motion, I have a second, I do need some clarification as to...
First meeting in May.
First meeting in May. Are you amenable to that, Councilman Allen?
No, sir, that's too far off.
All right.
That's, uh, it took us three months to do it, why don't we give them plenty of time to look at it, and introduce the new staff?
Mayor said it took too long for us to do it.
Yeah, it did, because we had a bunch of elected officials jockeying around here, let's let staff and them get it done.
It's good the first meeting's in March, but it's...
Uh, first meeting in April.
Second meeting in March.
First meeting in April.
Next meeting.
Is there a motion, Mayor?
We have a motion on the floor and a second to proceed with putting it on to the, of future agenda, now I'm waiting for clarification on the date.
Mayor, I would, Mayor, I'd like to do this thing as early as we, I mean, we have, we have the team in place, we have, they have been functioning, but I think we brought up some good issues about, number one, that, you know, we don't need that board where they gotta go and run it through a council, they don't have to come up, you know, and we wanna take and change the ordinance on that, so I don't know why it can't be done.
And Mayor, we got, we got a motion on the table, then I wanna move for an amendment to that motion, okay? I wanna move that we do it the first meeting in March.
If you wanna do that, I've gotta get the person who made the motion to agree to the amendment of the original motion, which was...
We can amend that.
That's what I'm saying, I need an amendment...
No, we, we're ending it.
No, no, no. No. Whoever made the motion...
We can just vote it down, and then come back.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
You, you made the motion originally, to place it on a future agenda.
Yes.
The question from Mr. Tyra, and from Mr. Parsons, are the date, one of them is suggested May, one of them is suggested March.
Let's go March the 20th.
I have a motion to adjust it to March the 20th, that's the second meeting, I need a second from the person, an approval who seconded, which was you, Mr. Hewlett, are you amenable to accepting March, second meeting?
Aye.
All right, so, there we have it, we have a motion on the floor to amend the Code of Ordinances regarding the Tourism Board, and bring it to, before the council, on the second meeting in March, that being March 20th. All in favor, please say aye.
Can I get some clarification?
Ah.
I think the attorney gets one.
I'm sorry?
Can I get some clarification, since I'm the one that's gonna be drafting the ordinance that needs to be amended? Can I get some direction from council, what exactly do you want this new ordinance amendments to say?
Well, that's the problem, from my point of view, I mean, let's keep the council of it, and let the professionals get involved with it, okay? So, why don't you work with the staff, and the volunteers?
If I'm hearing the council, you're, you're asking me to work with Shannon, and work with the Tourism Board, to change the ordinance, is that correct?
And bring something back to us, yes.
I think you can rest assured that council will have input for you.
And that's what we'll do, I will, does that give you enough time?
You can rest assured, council will have input.
Okay. Then, starting tomorrow, I will work with Shannon, and the next Tourism Board at their next meeting, and we will, we will come back something on March 20th.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. At this time, I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and that all members are present, the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney. We shall return. We have a quorum back in open session, we'll reconvene at this time. Do I have any motion based upon the discussion back in executive session?
Yes, I, I need to make a motion that we accept the Rule 11 mediation settlement agreement, uh, cause number C-2011095, between us and Hood County Development District Number One.
Second.
Hang on. I need to also hear as part of that motion, that you want to allow the city attorney to proceed with negotiation?
And the...
Finalize the settlement, please.
We'll let the city attorney to negotiate, and go ahead and sign the final agreement with this, on this situation.
All right, now we have a motion, Mr. Tyra.
Yes.
Now we have a motion including the city attorney finalizing the negotiation. And this is regarding cause number 201195, settlement with Hood County Development District and the City of Granbury. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.